Township Council meeting, Monday, August 24, 2020 is now called to order. Mayor, please lead us in salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mrs. Kraus, please read the statement of public notice.
Take notice that adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with NJSA 10:4-8 and NJSA 10:4-10 as follows. The notice of the meeting was promptly posted on the bulletin board at the municipal building located at 225 Main Street, Little Falls, New Jersey on January 9, 2020. A copy of the notice was mailed to the North Jersey Herald and News and Record on the same date. Additionally, a copy of the notice was filed in the Ellsley Township clerk on said date. This meeting is being conducted under the circumstances surrounding the COVID-19 health situation. No public will be allowed to attend the meeting in person. A YouTube link to view this meeting can be accessed on the township website at www.lfnj.com. Electronic provisions have been established for the public to participate during the public comment portion of the meeting.
Thank you. We're just adjusting the microphone. Can everybody hear the audio okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Kraus, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Courtenayre?
Present.
Councilmember Kwadi?
Present.
Councilmember Seaver?
Present.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Present.
Council President Scobha?
Present. Have a motion to approve the minutes. This is for the minutes, I'm sorry, for July 27th and August 10th. So moved by, was that Councilmember Courtenayre? Second?
Yes.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Vanchery. Mrs. Kraus, call the roll on the minutes.
Councilmember Courtenayre?
Yes.
Councilmember Kwadi?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Yes.
Council President Scobha?
Yes. We'll start off with Councilmember Courtenayre.
Yes, thank you. I don't have any committee reports tonight. However, I would like to read a statement. Tomorrow, I will be submitting my letter of resignation to Mayor Damiano in stepping down from my position as Little Falls Councilperson. A position for me which was a labor of love. My husband Pascal and I and Bear are moving to Delaware and starting a new chapter in our lives. But this chapter where I am your councilperson will be long remembered and one of the best chapters of my life. I submit this letter with a whole range of emotions from excitement and anticipation to some sadness. But the emotion I feel the most, however, is one of gratitude. Gratitude to my fellow councilmembers, Councilmember Seaver, Vanchery and Kwadi, and to Council President Scobha and Mayor Damiano for supporting me in my endeavor to serve the people of Little Falls. Gratitude to the members of the committees that I chaired, Senior Advisory Committee, Open Space, as well as the Little Falls Business Association, and having them help me to, I hope, make a difference in our town. Gratitude to all of the township employees, the Police Department, Fire Department, EMS and DPW, who worked so hard to make this the special town that it is and that made me so proud to be its councilperson. But most of all, gratitude to the residents of Little Falls who gave me the honor to serve them. Thank you.
Yes, it truly is an honor. Councilmember Kwadi?
Thank you, Council President. So, in light of what Councilwoman Courtenayre has just said, I think the gratitude certainly belongs with myself and the residents of the township of Little Falls for all that she has done just to make this town a better place to live. I wish people had some idea of how hard you worked and how big your impact has been on the township. And so, thank you for that. You have been a friend and a mentor and a guiding light for me personally through my journey to become and be a sitting councilperson. And I appreciate you so much for all you've done. So, thank you for that. As far as committee goes, just want to remind everybody that tomorrow night is our last movie in the park for 2020 and it will be the Goonies and we hope, sorry, excuse me, not tomorrow night, Wednesday night is the last movie in the park. It is the Goonies, the LFACD will be there selling crispy cream doughnuts, the Municipal Alliance will be there selling pretzels. I believe we will have popcorn and it'll be, it'll be an exciting and fun night. The weather looks like it's doing nice, so we hope everybody could join us. So, once again, my appreciation to Councilwoman Courtenayre and that's it for me. Thank you.
Councilmember Vanchery?
Thanks, Council President. I mean, first and foremost, to my colleagues, my friends for the past four years, sitting next to me at the council meetings, the Councilwoman Courtenayre, I just want to, you know, wish you, Pascal and Bear, all the best. We are going to miss you. You had such an impact on, obviously, me and so many others, whether it was members of the council, the mayor and even the residents, for your passion and dedication. You've been a mentor to me. I joined a little over a month after you did and you always made sure to, you know, help navigate me through some of the different duties that we have as a councilperson. So, I'm forever grateful for that. I'm going to miss you. You know, Delaware is getting some good people heading their way. But just know you'll always have a home here in Little Falls and I wish you nothing but the best. So, best of luck. Just a couple things, I'll fly in and obviously want to thank Councilwoman Courtenayre first. With the 9/11 ceremony, I just wanted to let people know that I met last week with Chief Sweetsie and members of the Fire Department to map out a plan for holding our annual ceremony on Friday, September 11th at 7:00 PM at Wilmore Road Park. I'm planning to send out the details this week via the town email blast, but we are going to go ahead. We're going to make some modifications this year in light of social distancing. You know, we're going to let the spread folks out as much as we can to be safe while we honor those that were lost on September 11th along with two special people from Little Falls. The other thing too is that we're going to let residents know, in light of social distancing and COVID, we're going to encourage you, if you do need sit, to bring your own chair rather than trying to set things up and worried about distancing folks as they arrive. But we are looking forward to having our annual event. Like I said, it's going to take place at 7:00 PM on Friday, September 11th. Details to follow and I'm grateful for the folks from the Fire Department who were able to help navigate through this and just secure everything we needed to make sure we have the event as planned. One other thing before I shift over to the next person is I just want to, you know, acknowledge Chief Post and the members of the Little Falls Police Department for the work that they've been doing over the last few weeks. Recently, there have been a number of residents on Broward Town Road as well as Hobson Avenue, including myself, you know, where I reside, regarding some of the activities that have been going on in the State Valley High School parking lot with many young residents and others from different towns speeding through constantly. And, you know, the chief and his department have been monitoring the situation. They've worked with Sheriff's Department to put up the appropriate radars on Broward Town Road and, you know, have sent a letter to State Valley High School requesting that, from dusk to dawn, once it does hit the end of the night, that both gates be sealed to avoid the constant barrage of young 17, 18-year-olds driving through with their fast vehicles. So, just want to thank the Police Department for addressing the needs of several residents at two locations, knowing this was a problem. And hopefully, tomorrow night at the State Valley High School Court of Education meeting, they plan on addressing the request that was sent by the chief and the follow-up by Mayor Damiano to close the gates going forward so that we can avoid nuisance that has happened every night. So, I just want to say thank you to the Chief Post and the Little Falls Police Department for being on top of this situation. That's it for me, Council President.
Councilmember Seaver?
Thank you. So, I want to wish Councilwoman Courtenayre the best in her future endeavors. I don't know if she will ever understand the pathway she has led for so many, including myself. And so, I want to truly heartfeltly thank her for that. And I hope she recognizes that and I hope the rest of the town recognizes that too. It really shows that when your heart is in the right place, nothing is impossible. So, thank you so much. Thank you for all your work. We do this out of a labor of love. And I wish you and Pascal and Bear the best in your next endeavors in Delaware. So, best of luck for that. Moving on to reports, just wanted to mention again, Councilmember Kwadi had mentioned Municipal Alliance is going to be selling pretzels at movie night on Wednesday night. So, please go ahead and support Municipal Alliance as well as the great, you know, the great expedition of movie nights to our town. We are continuing with our Farmer's Market every Sunday, 9 to 2. So, please come by 225 Main Street. In addition, the biggest news is that we now have launched our townwide yard sale, the first in Little Falls history. It will be held September 12th, it's a Saturday, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. You can sign up, it's a $5 charge for processing and the permit fee. You can sign up on community pass. The link is on our town website at lfnj.com. I will also be personally registering you at our Farmer's Market every Sunday. I did over 20 this past Sunday, so it's been great and our response has been great. The best thing about this is that we will do all the marketing for you. You will be a part of an interactive map that will be online so that as we advertise, they know that anybody who wants to shop the garage sales, they know that you are participating households. So, again, if anybody has questions regarding Farmer's Market or the townyard, townwide yard sale, please feel free to reach out to me at cseaver@lfnj.com. That is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Maria Courtenayre Martini Courtenayre, we'll definitely miss you on this dais. I'll definitely miss the 8 o'clock calls in the mornings that we'd have about issues. As you leave Little Falls tomorrow for the last time, you could most certainly hold your head up high knowing that you did all you could do for the residents of Little Falls in making it a better place to live, having the time that you served here. Also, your dedication to the Democratic Party, making that a top priority of your life and I know it always will be. So, on behalf of the residents of Little Falls, thank you, thank you, thank you. As far as the technical part of this, and Counselor, please correct me if I'm wrong, the Democratic Chair has 15 days to present three names to fulfill the vacant seat. The council has 30 days to select one of those individuals. Is that correct, Counselor?
Yes, it is.
Thank you. Mayor Damiano?
Thank you, Council President. I am going to save my comments for Councilwoman Courtenayre for the end of my comments here because in this case, I'm going to save the best for last. But that said, as far as town updates, there are only a couple of things I need to really address here this evening. The first is we have an anticipated finish date for our recreation complex project that's going on over there. And we are looking to host our first home football game as part of our initial opener of the new field on September 26th this year. Of course, that's fingers crossed in all hopes that sports programs are permitted to continue well into September and that our transmission rate of COVID remains relatively low. So, fingers crossed, everybody can join us there on September 26th for the grand opening of the field. So, we are hopeful again that that will be the date and that is the anticipated date that we have received from the contractors that we will be able to host an opening. It is a Saturday evening where we're going to be looking to do that. That said, Councilman Vanchery addressed some of the issues that there are on Broward Town Road and some of the surrounding areas lately. I am in the process of scheduling a meeting with State Valley High School so that we can attempt to address these particular issues surrounding the high school because it is becoming somewhat of a burden or nuisance on the Police Department to continue to be responding there for the same or similar calls. So, I am hoping that in short order, we will bring some resolve to that. Finally, on to Councilwoman Courtenayre. We had a lot of incredible things happen in the four short years that Councilwoman Courtenayre was on this council. And the number of accomplishments, the number of boxes that a check mark was placed into. There's not enough time here today to go through all of them. And frankly, I'm glad I was able to speak to her off the record and privately and tell her how I was going to miss her because I don't know that I have it in me to do it here publicly this evening. And we are certainly going to miss her. And for that, and unfortunately, again, we're not all here in person for reasons pertaining to COVID, but I was able to see Councilwoman Courtenayre last evening and present her with a plaque from the township and I am going to read that into the record. And it reads, "Councilmember Maria Martini Courtenayre, 2017 to 2020, presented by the mayor and council township of Little Falls. In recognition of your energetic and productive efforts on behalf of the residents of the township working with the stigma-free program, domestic violence program, open space trust fund, 2020 census and the Senior Citizens Advisory Committee, we thank you for your incredible dedication to this township and you will truly and certainly be missed here in Little Falls. We wish you absolutely nothing but the best on everything that comes your way in the future. And I know you are in the process of building your dream home and I could not be happier for you to fulfill that lifelong dream of yours and to move forward with that. So, congratulations to you. Thank you and you will certainly be missed here in Little Falls."
Can I have a motion to open the meeting for public comment for all matters?
So, move.
Moved by Councilmember Courtenayre. Second by Councilmember Vanchery. Mrs. Kraus, please read the statement.
Anyone wishing to address the Township Council may do so by sending an email to c kraus@lfnj.com. The email must provide your name and address for the record. At this time, there will be a 10-minute recess which will allow the public to send comments and questions via email. At the end of the recess, the meeting will reconvene and all proper emails will be read into the record. The Council President will determine if response is needed and if so, shall direct said response. Once the process is complete, we'll return to the regular order of business.
So, we're going to recess for 10 minutes. I gather we'll come back at 7:28. We're back. Thank you for your patience. We do have some emails that have been sent. I do want to read one that came from Renee Shapiro, the president of Little Falls ABC. "On behalf of the Little Falls ABC, we would like to thank Maria -- I'm sorry, this -- yes, this came in. On behalf of Little Falls ABC, we'd like to thank Maria for her dedication and for her caring. Maria succeeded in making so much happen with the county and open space grants. We are forever grateful for all she did for our town. We wish her the very best in her destiny of new beginnings. Renee, Little Falls ABC." Mayor, I think we have a comment from Councillor John Vedery. Would you like to read that?
Sure, Council President. This comment reads, "On behalf of the Little Falls Historical Society and the -- I'm sorry, this is from John Vedery at University Plaza Hackensack. It reads, 'On behalf of the Little Falls Historical Society and the Passaic River Coalition, I would like to extend a sincere thank you to Councilwoman Maria Cordnier for her years of dedicated service to the township of Little Falls and for her energetic support of the historical society and the Passaic River Coalition. Maria's contributions, along with the mayor and council, will have a lasting positive impact on our community. She will be greatly missed, and I wish her all the very best.'"
We have another email from Chairman Kevin Barry. "I want to offer my sincere gratitude to Councilwoman Maria Cordnier for her years of service to the people of Little Falls. Maria has been a faithful public servant who has always made her decisions in the best interests of Little Falls residents. Her hard work and dedication has enriched the lives of Little Falls residents, especially our senior community. Her commitment to open space has improved the quality of life for everyone. I want to wish Maria and Pascal nothing but happiness as they begin a new chapter in their lives. Finally, Kevin Barry, chairman of Little Falls Democratic Club." Mayor, we have a comment from Mr. Fernandez regarding the field. Actually, two comments. Would you like to address the first one?
Sure. The first is, Mr. Mayor, at the last workshop two weeks ago, I asked if any boring had been done around Duva Field to ensure the residents of Jackson Park that their soil is not contaminated with arsenic and PCBs, just like Duva Field is. Any comments on that? I personally don't believe I am suited to really provide comment on the spread of those types of contaminants. Our engineer is not on the phone with us this evening, but I would defer to him at the following meeting for his comments as to whether or not those types of contaminants, you know, travel or not, or whether they stay kind of localized. I'm just certainly not educated in that area to provide any specific comment in that.
So, Mr. Fernandez, we will get back to you regarding your question on the field. Mayor, a second question or comment from Mr. Fernandez?
Sure. From Mr. Fernandez, it reads, "Mr. Mayor, I just want to express my total dissatisfaction and outrage with you and the council for bringing up ordinance 1389 in which you asked the hard work from taxpayers of Little Falls to bond an extra half a million dollars for Duva Field. After just a few months back, you bonded $2.7 million also for Duva Field. I find that in this uncertain economic times when people are struggling financially to make ends meet, you and the council are spending out tax freely on unnecessary projects. These bonds have to be paid back in the future with new tax increases and therefore jeopardizing the future of many residents that are struggling to pay their share of taxes. Is my comment or response to that is simply, as I indicated, yes, there is -- there was another $500,000 that was added as -- in addition to the prior bond, but these figures do not take into consideration the $1.15 million that the township has received in grants to be applied to this field and this improvement. The other thing that this assumes is that there will be major tax increases jeopardizing the future of many residents that are struggling. It doesn't take into consideration the potentials that the township has for future revenues. It doesn't take into consideration the fact that there was absolutely no tax increase this past year with respect to, you know, our residents here in town. So remaining fiscally responsible while providing services, while improving the municipality, is something that I would still and will still advocate for every single day. I don't believe that spending money is -- or I should say, on these unnecessary projects. I guess that is in the eye of the beholder, whether or not a project is necessary or unnecessary. This is a project that I believe provides a benefit to everyone in town, and the reason being is because property values in town, I believe, will see -- or this will have an impact on property values in town because this will be a town, and will continue to be even more so than it is now, a town that people want to move to and will pay premium dollars to do that. It's been shown in just watching real estate trends here in Little Falls, homes that frankly, in the past would have had no business going for what they're going for now, is becoming a far more regular trend. Houses going for well over asking has become a regular trend. So again, whether you may feel it's an unnecessary expense, I can tell you that there are hundreds and hundreds of people who are supporting the fact that the township is moving forward with this expense. There are hundreds and hundreds of kids and hundreds and hundreds of adults in town, if not thousands, in town who will see the benefit of this in the physical sense of they will utilize it and receive those benefits. And everyone in town will see the benefits of living in a municipality and a township that provides incredible services, and it still remains a top priority to continue to stabilize taxes as we have since I've been elected as mayor. So again, you're certainly, I will say, your shots or your outrage in all of this is noted. That said, I don't know that I am, as you indicate, jeopardizing the future of residents here in Little Falls. I would strongly disagree with that portion of your comment, and that's all that I have, Council President.
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, although Mr. Fernandez did address the letter to the mayor, he did include the council. Those council members have any comments regarding Mr. Fernandez's comment to the mayor? Mrs. Kraus, do we have any other emails or correspondence that came through? Comments?
No.
Thank you. Councillor Renzo, I know I skipped over you, so I'm circling back to you. I apologize.
That's fine, Council President. I don't have anything in particular to report, but I also wanted to add to the chorus of well wishers to Councilwoman Cordnier. I appreciate that from the very beginning, she was an inquisitive and curious council member, willing to ask questions and to engage in interesting questions to me, and she always had a laser focus on what was the right thing to do. That was always what her ultimate question was, and I appreciate that very much. I will miss her. New Jersey's loss is Delaware's gain, and that is big shoes that have to be filled. So Maria, good luck to you and your family, and I wish you nothing but happiness in the future.
Can I have a motion to approve -- I'm sorry. Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Cordnier.
Second.
Second by Councilman Vancheri. Do we have any questions regarding the consent agenda or any comments? Mrs. Kraus, call the roll for the consent agenda.
Councilmember Cordnier?
Yes.
Councilmember Kawati?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scovva?
Mrs. Kraus, please read ordinance 1389.
Introduction of Ordinance Number 1389, an ordinance entitled Bond Ordinance to appropriate an additional sum of $500,000 for the installation of a synthetic turf multipurpose athletic field at Duva Field in buying for the township of Little Falls and the county of Passaic, New Jersey. Make a down payment to authorize the issuance of bond to finance such additional appropriation and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes and anticipation of the issuance of such bond through the second reading and public hearing scheduled for September 14th, 2020.
Can I have a motion to introduce ordinance 1389?
So moved.
Moved by Councilmember Cordnier. Second, please.
That's right.
Second by Councilmember Vancheri. Mrs. Kraus, call the roll on 1389, please.
Councilmember Cordnier?
Yes.
Councilmember Kawati?
Yes.
Councilmember Seaver?
Yes.
Councilmember Vancheri?
Yes.
Council President Scovva?
Yes.
Mayor Damiano?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Tomorrow evening, I will be on social media hosting my first virtual town hall. It was something that last year, I was able to hold one in person. I thought it went particularly well, able to address questions and concerns in a far more relaxed media than this year at council meetings where oftentimes people are a little reluctant to submit questions. I am going to be hosting it virtually, so everybody can attend from the comforts of their own home. They can watch it on Facebook Live. They can submit questions if they would like during that, and I will try to address questions or concerns that people may have. If there are questions or concerns that people have ahead of time that they would like me to address, certainly feel free to send me an email tomorrow or tonight with a question, and I will be sure to add it to the list and agenda of items that I'm looking to provide some information and updates on. Again, I want it to be a relaxed way to kind of transmit some information to individuals. I think, again, through social media, it's just easy for everybody to stay home, have questions answered, get the information that they're looking for, and again, do it in a way that they are not burdened by having to even find a sitter for some people, to leave their house, to meet me somewhere else, whether it be the Civic Center like we've done in the past. And everyone can certainly feel free to join me, and if possible, somehow, some way, if we can, I would like to get the video posted on the township's website at some point for those who may not be able to view it live tomorrow so that anybody can actually then review it after that. So I do want to, again, attempt to address everything. I will try my best. I do not know exactly how long it will be. If the discussion and questions continue to come in and it's fruitful, we will continue to answer them until everybody is sick of listening to me. I'm not going to be doing it just to hear myself talk tomorrow, so if there are questions, I'm certainly happy to answer them. So feel free to tune in on Facebook Live tomorrow for those updates. And just, sorry, it'll be at 7:30 tomorrow evening.
Are there any questions regarding the mayor's town hall tomorrow night? Councilmember, for the last time, Maria Cordnier, would you like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Maria Martini Cordnier. Second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember --
All second.
All second. Second. The entire council seconds the motion to adjourn this meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by saying nay. This meeting is now adjourned.